Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roxanne, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Here.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Here.
Mr. Malone?
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Here.
Mr. Sebelia?
Here.
Mr. Soms?
Here.
Mr. Washington?
Here.
Nine here, zero absent.
Are there any resident and property owners which to speak at this time? Mr. Cherry?
Good evening. Mike Cherry, Five Whip of Willford Island. I noticed looking at the calendar that this is the last meeting of this august group prior to the election. And I think it's important that it be recognized that most of you are incumbents. You're all running again, so maybe you stepped up the first time going, "This is something I want to do," and didn't fully understand the commitment you were making. But I think it says a lot for people who not only served well and devoted all their time to step up and say, "I'm going to do this again because I'm not done." I think this group works tremendously long hours serving the town. I think this group works together extremely well. I'm going to miss Mike. I understand, you know, thank you for stepping up when there was a vacancy. I tried to snag you for something else, and I understand family comes first. But it is appreciated. We don't always agree, but I've come to understand you listen. You may not like what's being said, you may not change because I've said something or somebody else has said something, but you listen, and I can't ask for more. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cherry. Mike. Okay, at this time, I would like Mr. our EDC Chair, John Vincent, to make a presentation for us. Were there any other public comments, by the way? I sort of cut. No? Okay.
All right.
Go for it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I didn't think I've ever been in a gladiator room. My name is John Vincent, 19 Friar Tuck Drive in Gales Ferry. I am the Chair of the Economic Development Commission, and I'm here tonight to present to you the 2018-2019 Economic Development Commission Annual Report. I understand that you have all been given a copy of the report, and as such, I will not take up time by reading to you from the report. However, I would like to highlight just a few points. As you know, the main objective of the Economic Development Commission is to expand the tax base of the Town of Ledger and to facilitate, promote, and advise on economic development issues. Our role is primarily advisory, not regulatory. On page three of the report, you'll find the report of our activities towards the fulfillment of our objectives. As you can see, we have taken numerous steps towards promoting local businesses, as well as updating the town website with a list of available commercial properties. We have experienced several business changes in both Gales Ferry and Ledger. Our town has seen some new businesses, some renovated businesses, some businesses under new management, and one business has closed over the year. We are working on many new ideas to facilitate the growth of business in our town, including promoting the very successful summer and winter farmer's market, looking at events to bring people to town, as well as other ideas set forth in our annual report. Finally, our commission realizes that we should be prepared for future changes, including the Ledger Center School development, the Preston Hospital site development, and the expansion of water and sewer services. I would like to thank you for your attention, and I submit our report.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Any questions or comments of anyone here?
Thank you.
I actually do have a question, sorry.
So, the new gas station down the road here, is it the best way?
Yeah.
Okay. Is it going to be just like the one on Route 12, essentially?
Probably a different donut shop, but...
My next question is, you know, is it going to be like a Subway going in there? Is it going to be a donut shop or hot tacos? I don't know.
The little bird I heard said it was going to be a Dunkin' Donut. I don't really know for sure what's going in there.
That would really beef stuff up in the town. Dunkin' Donuts on this side.
We'll have to wait to see.
So, John, when are you bringing that Trader Joe's in?
Soon as we can get the coming down the hill into Gales Ferry on the right. Soon as we get that site, that would be nice.
How many, approximately how many open business venues are there? How many sites are there? Like, I saw you list them on the town website, but about how many are there? And other than listing them on the town website, is there anything else that we do to market those vacant properties?
For the vacant prop, for commercial properties?
Yeah.
That are out there? Oh, there's a number of different commercial websites that are out there. The Bets and the Spolestar, and commercial agents have them in their pocket. There's a lot of them out there that, other than what we put on the website. So, some of them we don't know. It all depends on who wants to sell their property tomorrow, and I might have a buyer next week, so I'm not going to tell you about it.
Gotcha. Okay.
It's kind of the way the business works.
Just a point of interest, there are other businesses opening in Ledger. Put up a new sign last week down in Village for a hair salon going in there. There's a couple of businesses that are involved in their build-outs, so there are some other things bubbling along.
Bubbling is good.
It changes daily.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick thing, Chairman.
Yes.
John, I'd just like to thank you for stepping up to Chair of the EDC, for one. Two, I would also like to thank you for reaching out to so many businesses as you have on the Events Magazine. As you know, that's something that's, our first issue is coming up soon, and John has done a great job canvassing with local businesses and drumming up interest, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Are there any town councillor comments at this time? Wow, lots of hands. Councillor McGrattan.
Okay. In this morning's day, there was an article on OSCAR, Southeastern Connecticut Regional Resource Recovery Authority. They're having a hazardous waste collection day on Saturday, November the second, thank you, at the transfer station 889 Colonel Ledger Highway. They also listed here the things that you can bring and also what's not accepted, and the big one is tires. They don't want tires. So, there is a phone number if you wanted to call, you know, to, if you had something you weren't quite sure about, and the number, I don't know if it was here. Sure if you go. I'm sure if you call, they will tell you if you're not sure about what to bring or not to bring.
And I would just add that my husband has experienced several different hazardous waste days the last several months, and they are all very efficiently run. He said the only one he's ever had to wait in line for is Ledger's. It's just ours, it's not that it's any slower because they're all run the same. It must be we, we're just more popular.
Well, it's the last one of the year, too.
Is it always the last one?
Yes.
Okay. It could be, it could be, but he's been to Griswold and to Stonington. Yeah, he's, anyway, but always very efficient.
I do. So, I wanted to mention that the 2020 census is next spring. And the reason I want to mention it is because I work part-time in another town, which has been flagged as having a high low response score, which means they hit a 20% threshold of their residents not self-responding to the census. So, out of curi, no, it's 20% is the threshold. Out of curiosity, I looked up Ledger. We were at 19.1% of not self-responding. So, I just want to get it out there. I think it's, you know, there's $675 billion in federal funding that gets allotted based on census feedback. It's about congressional delegations, redistricting. After the 2000 census, Connecticut did lose a congressional representative, and we are on track to lose another one after the 2030 census. So, it is a big deal, and right now, I'm actually going to post something on the forum later, but right now, they're hiring, they're hiring a lot of temporary employees to help with backroom stuff, eventual door knocking for nonrespondents. But anyway, I just wanted to get it out there that it's coming and it matters.
The salary that they were offering was pretty good.
It really is. I mean, yeah.
I want to add something to that, that a lot of people don't understand. Because I work for DOT, we get a lot of funding from the feds, and what happens is, for a lot of cases, we are a donor state, which means the taxes we pay, they go to the Fed, and you look at 100%, we get back 70%, while other states are getting a lot more back. And part of that is directly related to the census. So, those numbers are low, the federal government shifts those monies to other states. So, when people think about their taxes, they don't want to turn that piece of paper in, just think, just say to yourself, "You're talking with your wallet," because you're going to lose money for not filling that paperwork out.
Very good comment. We'll have to make sure we get the word out on that for sure. Yes?
So, Ledger Congregational Church had a Ledger History Day on Sunday. It was very well attended. I just wanted to thank all the people who showed up. About half of the people who attended were not church members. We served clam chowder. It was a free dinner. We served apple pie. I think I know the person who made the pies. They were delicious. We had little ham sandwiches and egg salad. More importantly, we had a lot of Ledger history available for people to learn about in the town. We had the church open. We had the food pantry, which used to be the town hall. We had the center school open. We had the weigh station open, which is the little building where the bears are that everybody's wondering how they got there.
That's hysterical.
I think they were waiting for the open house, but they're still there. And we had something else open, I can't remember. So, we had, I think, six or seven places that people could go, tour, learn about the facility. Oh, the chowder house. We had the chowder house open. Just a great afternoon. It really felt like a good time to be in Ledger. And that, on top of following, I wasn't there, but it looked like you guys had a wonderful time at Color Me Fall, which was also a great event. So, great weekend. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Yes.
I just want to make another pitch for, you know, this time of the year, the fall, it's the rut for the deers, also the turkeys are out. And so, I go to work very early in the morning, just as the sun comes up, and I usually get home, especially at this time of the year, right, when it goes down. So, I've noticed an increased volume of deer and turkeys and coyotes just right on, like Christie Hill Road, Old Military Highway, you know, just the local roads here in Gales Ferry and in Ledger. Just be careful because, you know, they're camouflaged naturally, and you don't know they're out there until they step in front of your car. And it can be surprising at 5:30 in the morning. Take care for somebody who knows.
Like the one I saw yesterday morning waiting Bill Soms' front yard.
Yeah. The turkeys are out.
Four o'clock in the morning.
An eight pointer. They're out there.
I was going to say, it's been very safe on the ledger time.
So, you're afraid just on the other side of the wall.
Final comment to follow up on what Mr. Cherry said. This is our last meeting before the election. I sincerely wish everyone here good luck, except, well, good luck to you, too, for whatever.
It's really been a pleasure, and it's amazing how well this group works together and how hard people work. And I'm so appreciative of having that, the actual opportunity to sit and work with everybody here on some level. It's really, it's really been impressive, and I'm wishing everybody the best, a lot coming into the new season.
Very good.
Thank you.
Come back and see us sometime.
I will.
Well, we should have one more meeting before, before the swearing-in.
Yeah.
In November, we usually have one meeting.
So, you're going to hear it all again.
That's okay.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the public hearing minutes of October 9th and the regular meeting minutes of October 9th.
So, moved.
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded. Any corrections, additions, comments? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. You'll find communications in the portal. Did I have a referral?
There's several referrals, several to admin and one to Lendy's.
Okay. So, you'll find those in the portal as well. Subcommittee liaison reports. Admin?
Admin has not met.
Finance?
Finance had the week off.
Lendy's?
Lendy's did not meet.
Oh, wow. I see a short meeting here. Liaison reports. To my left, yes.
The bill came out last Monday, and there's more good news. We now have leaks in the roof. Not so bad news, they're small leaks, but they are still leaks nonetheless, something new. Add that to the 300 punch item, punchless items we have on the, the same basic stuff. The, on the track and field, all the bids came in over what we had budgeted. We budgeted 1.9 million. Lowest bid came in at 2.14. That contractor was disqualified because, well, he's got a poor track record. He hasn't finished a project in six years. I'm glad somebody got that. I've been waiting all night to ask.
Poor track record? Oh.
Yeah. All right. And the highest one was 2.45 million. So, we sent them all back to the drawing board. I talked to, one of the big expenses is hauling the dirt out of the area, talking 4,000, 5,000 yards of dirt. So, I talked to Steve Maslin, when this first came up a couple of months back, can we keep the dirt in town? That's going to keep the price down. He was looking into that. Another option is, instead of bringing the field down 18 inches, we're going to bring it up. We're going to take off the topsoil, which is like 1,000 yards. We can start it here in town, which keeps the cost down, and then bring the rest of the track field, field up, to be at the high point, which would be the plain field and the track itself. That might be a little bit less money. We'll find that out at the next bid opening. And that's all I got.
Out of curiosity, I know from the Parks and Recs question, it kind of ties into this. Some of the fields are in horrendous condition, and what they lack is topsoil. And so, has any consideration been like over next to Gallup Hill, where they have those fills? That field is usually a quagmire, so additional material there. Blondes, if you take off three or four inches, which you got is anybody's guess into that stuff, and that's got so many undulations. So, there's probably places within town on these fields you can waste the material. It's still the hauling issue, so the cost of either raising the track itself...
Well, the topsoil still has to come off, down to the subgrade material. So, topsoil is available, and as long as it stays in the town, the cost is reduced.
That may be a discussion with Parks and Rec because the fills could be...
And Steve Maslin, yeah.
Yeah.
That's already happened.
No interest, huh?
No. We're totally on it. Parks and Rec is on it.
There's a big value there in all that topsoil.
Yep. There's an ability to stage all the topsoil up at the transfer station up at the top of the hill, and then what they're, the intent is, is to screen it all and then truck it perfect, with public works trucks for Parks and Rec's fields for spreading.
Great.
We have a way to solve that one, but we still have a ways to go on the dollar value of the...
Yeah, we're a little...
Project.
A little awful.
So, if they keep the soil in town rather than trucking it out, isn't there some benefit to somebody if they trucked it out?
Yes. That's why I was against doing that, because they're going to turn around and sell it. They're going to charge us to haul it out of town and turn around and sell it on the other end.
But don't we have the ability to, if we haul that material up to the town, up to the transfer station and stockpile it there? If it's that much material, the town does have the ability to sell off the material?
Oh, yeah. We could do it, and we're not really in the position to haul it ourselves because the trucks that typically do that type of hauling are much bigger than the dump trucks that we have.
This would be you pick up.
This is, they bring it to the transfer station, and instead of having to haul it 20 or 30 or 50 miles, they're hauling it maybe four.
Yeah, but I'm thinking on the other side of the spectrum, when you got all the soil up there and you say, "Okay, we've got 2,000 yards we don't need. Someone wants to come up and buy it, we'll load your truck."
Oh, right. Yeah, we could easily do that. You know, we have the loader on site, so we could do that.
But my, I can think what my question was. Are they going to now say, "Well, we don't have this soil to sell anymore, so it's going to be more to haul?"
Right. So, maybe depending on that to offset their bid.
Right.
So, again, we'll have to wait and see what the new numbers reflect.
And then we charge you by ton, I'm sure.
Probably by yard.
Yard.
If the loader's wet, it's going to weigh more, so you really can't go by weight, you got to be by volume.
So, John, just going back to the 600 plus punch list, is that for both schools or is that for one?
Yes, that's about 300 per school.
Okay. And we're out of the police thing, right? We're done with that?
Yeah.
Finally done with that?
Yes.
Okay. It just kept kind of rearing its head, you know, the plumbing, the heating, the drainage.
Yeah, there was a problem with the police department with the high moisture in the basement, but that's all been redesigned and something taken care of.
So, when do you think we'll be out of the schools?
I'm naming up a number on that one.
And we're still underrunning?
Yeah, we're up and running.
I say underrunning budget-wise.
Oh, yes. Yeah, there's no more money being exchanged. We're done paying for anything else because of these issues.
Right.
And contractors aren't being paid either until they step up and fix.
And fix, yeah. Do the deliverables that they need to. Right. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for John?
Good report.
Other liaison reports?
I got a couple. Historic District met Monday, Historic District Commission met Monday night. The Up Down Sawmill has been open every Saturday in October to date and will continue to be open until the end of November, water level and pond permitting, so that they can saw. They've discovered a problem with the head gate, which could be potentially expensive, but they're temporarily fixing it, and we'll maybe hearing more about that next year. The caretakers held a family and friends christening for their new baby. White oak tree next to the house was professionally fertilized. We've been worried about losing that. Fast Signs is working on a plan for traffic control near the house. It will have a more professional inviting appearance than the current cones. And the scout troop postponed their camp out at the Nathan Lester House due to the triple E virus that's going to do that in November. Commission had a table at the last farmer's market. They opened the center school for tours. The new market manager has asked if the schoolhouse could be open for every market next summer, and the commission discussed that as a favorable way to enable more people to see that building. The center school also had about 40 visitors during Ledger History Day, the Yuletide event. The Nathan Lester House is set for Sunday, December 1st in the afternoon. If you haven't been, that's a really nice event. Ledger Carolers, carolers are already lined up to perform. And work continues with social media. Missy Dyson has stepped up to replace Laura Kelly when she and her family get their orders for their new location. So, the members of the commission met earlier this month to discuss ideas for fundraising for historic projects, and they continue that discussion with the full commission, so that's an ongoing thought and activity. That's my report. And I got one more.
Go for it.
Okay. WPCA met last night. The interconnect with Squaw, Chriswood Trace was exercised on October 17th, meaning they opened the interconnect, so Ledger WPCA fed water to Squaw. There was lightning strike at the Squaw pump house, and Ledger WPCA will be billing Squaw for the 18,000 gallons used by the 43 houses on the system. And, good news, Groton Utilities has completed the last of the five interconnections with Squaw. The last one was on Iron Street. Still more correspondence fighting with asylum control. They don't have a case, but they're still writing and asking for payment. Work continues in demolishment of Ledger, of Gallup Hill tank and the Loftus Well Field. And this is new information. The back driveway at the wastewater treatment plant was compromised by erosion from the solar project. There was an article about that in the paper this week about erosion from solar panels. The anticipated capital expense to pave the road is $12,000, and with asphalt plants due to close very soon, the WPCA took action to spend capital dollars to pave the road and divert the water flow to prevent future problems. It's not a paved road now, so it washed out. So, paving it and diverting the water will solve the problem. But this is something we need to think about if we do another solar panel project. I was corresponding with somebody about, you know, it kind of stands to reason that there would be erosion if you're on a grade with solar panels. And the person told me there are actually things they can do that they don't do because they're not required, so we're going to need to require that they, if we're on a grade, that we look at erosion control. Groton Utilities reported about 40 residences have allowed cross-connection inspections after receiving their shut-off notices, and there are still 45 left to complete. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Any other liaison reports? Mine is sort of a liaison report. I had the occasion to, Mary, you'll like this story, I had the occasion to deliver some things from the food pantry down to senior housing. And it happened to be one of these beautiful days, a couple of days ago, and I was sitting on one of the new benches chatting with some of the seniors, and boy, are they happy. They couldn't be happier with Charlie and the whole group. It's just really nice to see.
Right. And the new director is...
And the new director, and also Steve...
Shuttleworth.
Shuttleworth. It's just, it's just really nice. They invited me to there. I'm sure they've invited you to Thanksgiving dinner, and so I have like my little home now if I ever need a free meal. Anyway.
Good news.
And now the report of the mayor.
Okay. So, I'll just touch on quickly the elderly and disabled. The tax credits that we extended this past year were $334,400. That was down slightly from the 341 of the prior year, but those are the two highest years in the history of the program. So, it's a, it's a pretty generous program. It's probably, I think we could safely say, it's one of the most generous programs in the state of Connecticut. So, it is something, I'm glad that we are looking at it and trying to find a way to make it sustainable going forward. As you know, we had this storm on October 16th. We only had 190 outages, one road closure briefly from a tree, kind of pales in comparison to the 1,200 outages that we experienced today. But we recovered very well from that storm. We did have 38 customers without power for two days during that storm. And again, I would, I would say to residents, it's a really good time to prepare for storms and also to consider having a whole-house generator, and if you can't afford a whole-house generator, a smaller compact gas-powered generator that will get you some circuits to, to be able to continue functioning in your house will be important. Stonington really got whacked in that storm, so we're pretty fortunate. As Councillor Soms alluded to, it's happy to see the interconnect was used for the first time over for the Chriswood subdivision. I think we've got 43 Chriswood residents that are very happy that that valve was opened. I spoke ahead of the Crop Walk on Sunday. That is a walk to raise awareness and funds for the hungry. And the local one, which launched out of the Methodist Church in Gales Ferry, raised over $15,000 on Sunday. Also on Sunday, I attended an Eagle Scout Award presentation for Wesley Hughes. That was at the Gales Ferry Firehouse. And Wesley Hughes' claim to fame is that he is the sixth Hughes to get the Eagle Scout Award. So I commented to his grandfather that on a per capita basis, they probably have far more Eagle Scouts in their family than maybe anybody else in the country. So they've done well with that. At the end of that day, I attended the town history play at the Ledyard Congregational Church, and I played the role as first selectman. So they had kind of a little skit, and it was actually really a great, a great learning piece. One of the things that I learned out of that, that I had no idea, was that the original library for the town of Ledyard was the upstairs, the balcony area of the Ledyard Congregational Church. And that, over time, people were very much using the library, to the point where the clergy said to the people that were involved in the library, you know, you guys kind of have to get your own space, because this is going really well. So Henry Bill entered the scene, and the rest is history. I attended a Ledyard Prevention Coalition meeting. That was yesterday, actually. It was, the discussion was about vaping. It's actually shocking. I couldn't believe that one module for a vaping device is equivalent to 20 cigarettes. So, in terms of the nicotine level that's provided. So it's really amazing, and they had a retired doctor there that was speaking about it. And it's really, it's something they've got to get their arms around. Seems extremely dangerous, and they're working to prevent that at the middle school and high school levels now. I got the opportunity to wish Dan Gagnon well, as he retired from the Ledyard Police Force after 25 years. Dan's last day was last Thursday, and the very following day, he was packed up, moving to Washington, DC. So big changes for Dan Gagnon and his family as he starts his next career. We also hired a tax collector. Not to take anything away from the one that we hired, there were only two applicants. One was not really qualified, one was very qualified. So we have hired one, which will be starting on November 18th, with some overlap with Joan Carroll, for about two and a half weeks before Joan retires. So I thank Joan for staying on to kind of pass the torch for our new tax collector. That'll be important. Two quick last things. The, I thought you might find this interesting. The senior center revenues for the first three months with Parks and Recs in place exceeded the entire last year's revenues. So, and one item of note is that their food service sales are up 154%. So I think things are going well there. And then the last thing, I just wanted to wish everybody good luck on November 5th. We're gonna, I think we meet on November 13th, so we'll see everybody here again, no matter what, but I wish everybody the best of luck. You've done well together.
Thank you.
That's my report for tonight.
Any questions for the mayor? Mayor, just follow up on your senior center comment. I, the Ledyard Food Pantry volunteer, we had a luncheon there this week. There were probably 25 people there. The food was really fabulous. It was really, really good.
Good.
So I can understand why their numbers. I mean, he's always been there, but I think the word is getting out, that the food there is really good, so. So it is a good place for those watching at home, if you're trying to put a luncheon or breakfast together for 25, 30 people, even more, probably. He puts out a nice buffet. It's really a good place to consider, and I don't think a lot of people consider that, so.
Great point.
Any other questions? Yes?
Just a comment. Dan Gagnon's retirement date caught me totally by surprise, so I just want to comment and compliment Dan. He was an outstanding officer. He performed several heroic, one very notable action. It's the kind of officer he was, and I've gotten to know him over the years and really appreciate his service, and kind of miss him.
Yeah.
So, I lost.
Yeah. As Dan goes, he very quietly exited stage left. I mean, that's just his style. There was no party, there was no fanfare, that's just how he was. And he did his job, he did it extremely professionally, and he moved on. So I'm sorry to see him go. He's a solid guy.
Okay. We have now old business. Oh, and good luck to you, mayor.
Oh, thank you.
Totally forgot about that. We're all good-lucking each other. Is there any, anybody like to amend the agenda under new business? Hearing non-Land use?
I make a motion to adopt proposed amendment to ordinance number 300, Tac 012, formerly number 130, in ordinance concerning blight and public nuisance to the town of Ledyard, as contained in the draft dated August 28, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anything to add?
No, nothing to add, just to recap, we took what we had for our original blight ordinance. We looked at the Groton ordinance, which is so-called been bulletproof through the attorney, and been used successfully in Groton. So we took their ordinance, merged it into our ordinance with their language, went through the town attorney review. Overall, there's no change to what the ordinance is, and just some of the language to make it a little bit more legalese, I guess is the best way to put it, so.
It's probably a good place to add that this week I called in with a photo of a property on Route 12. Some of you may have seen it. And the zoning officer, just to commend him, got right out there. Got right out there. So that was really nice to see. Any other questions, comments? Yes?
So, with regard to reporting and enforcing, just to clear it up for me and everybody watching, what's the process?
The process? If you, if you have a blight complaint, it's the formal written process.
So if someone drives by a property, it's not being up kept, someone, so forth, who do they contact?
They contact the white enforcement officer, who happened to be the CEO, in this case here.
There's a form online.
There's a form online that you can fill out and submit.
Is it, is it anonymous?
No.
It is not anonymous.
It is not anonymous.
So the person who files the complaint can be known by the person who the complaint's filed on?
If that's anything, you should, any, any person is entitled to know who their accuser is.
Accuser is. I got that part. So then, what, so what's the process, then? What happens then?
Well, the process of a blight complaint is reported. The blight enforcement officer will, at first, work with the property owner to get voluntary compliance.
So they notify them, either by phone or by letter?
They are notified. Notified, or by letter, or in person.
Or knock on the door.
Or knock on the door, yep. And they try to, first thing that they will always try to do in any violation notice is to try to get voluntary compliance.
Get some...
And then after that point, and then it falls into the legal aspect of...
So is that a 30-day, you have 30 days?
Prescribed time period.
Prescribed time period. To, to...
What is that prescribed?
To do the cleanup.
Off the top of my head, I don't remember.
Yeah, I believe it's...
But it's like 30 days. It's all spelled out on the ordinance, but I think it's 30 days.
I thought it was 30.
30 days for the...
And it's been a while since...
After which point, if they don't, we actually have the ability to go in and have whatever it is cleaned up and lien the property.
So that's the penalty?
That's one option.
Not to mention fines.
Right. So who does the fining?
The town.
The town, when you say the town, who?
Same thing, CEO.
CEO issues a summons.
Yes. They're, they're, right. Issues a summons with the fine, you know, per day, whatever, I think a hundred dollars.
And if the summons isn't paid, then that's addition to the lien, to the lien.
That's correct.
So let's say the person says, I'm not gonna comply, you can, you know, do whatever, I'm not paying the fine. That becomes part of the lien, the summons and any interest.